Right, right.
As it's five thirty two P M. I'll call the October seventeenth, two thousand twenty three Town of Breckenridge Planning Commission to order. Chris do roll call.
All right, Mr. Gerard. Mr. Fractor.
Here.
Mr. Geller.
You're.
Mr. Lee's here. Miss Proper.
Yeah.
Mr. Gara.
Here.
And Miss Gort.
Okay, Commissioners, any changes to the minutes from the last meeting? Okay, so. The minutes from the October third. Is that right? Yeah, third, two thousand twenty three Town of Breckenridge Planning Commission are approved. Any changes to the agenda?
No changes tonight.
Okay. As part of a certified local government, we're asked to take public comment on historical preservation issues in the community. With that, I'll open the meeting to any public comment. If you're attending the meeting by phone, press star nine on your phone, then star fix star six to unmute yourself.
It went online.
Okay, we'll move on. We have two items on the consent calendar. The first one is the Stafford residence. Any questions or would anyone move to want to move to call it up? I I do have one question. I don't think we need to call up. One is, and this applicant here. I'm just question is, don't you do you need emergency access to the lower level for those subterranean lifts? I didn't see in, I just saw a straight foundation. I hadn't seen any openings. Okay.
So the door come into the storage area?
Got it. And then just a quick question for staff. Is this Sarah's or?
Sarah is online.
Okay. Even though it is the primary seat suite, but technically that could be a lock off. How does that fit with the?
Let me take a look at the. The definition for Len A D U or lock off says it has to have direct. Access to. Parking. I don't believe. That was the case here. So if you look at page. Twenty-two in the packet cliff. I don't know if you can pull that up for everybody.
Yeah, I got you.
So the the primary suite is above that third garage, but it doesn't have a wet bar. And it's it's you'd have to go through the main portion of the house to access the parking, so.
Okay.
Would not be considered a lock off. And good evening, everyone. Sorry, I didn't introduce myself.
Got it. So on the first level. In that vestibule between the stairs and the garage, that's just a, those are both windows on either side and not, not doors.
That's correct. There's a door from the garage to the exterior patio, but those are windows in the lock in the airlock kind of area.
All right, so only questions I have. Thanks. So. All right, move on. The next item on the consent calendar, I guess you guys are all set. Thank you. Sorry to keep you so long. It's a great looking project. The Wagner residence, any questions or anyone want to move to call it up? Mark. Okay, we have sec- oh, a second.
Second.
Second. Okay. All right, so. Cliff, you're on.
Need a roll call.
Do we vote to call it up?
All right, Mr. Lee's.
Yes.
Miss Gort.
Listening in, but not.
Mr. Gerard. Mr. Fractor, yes. Mr. Geller.
Yes.
Miss Proper.
Yes.
And Mr. Gara.
Yes.
Hey. Cliff, you're you're on.
Righty. Well, good evening, Commissioner. Just one second as I share my screen.
And maybe while we're at it, Mark, if you can just identify any particular issues you were concerned about, it might help. You know, Taylor Cliff's report, so he's not going through the entire project.
I intend to ask the applicant about sediment control.
Okay. Thank you.
I was going, I was going to raise it, I'm. About, I forget, I have to look up the number about the driveway, the impact of the driveway. I think. I'm concerned it's visible and two negative two points may not be enough. Okay.
I'd like to know a bit more about the. Forthcoming hers analysis and policy thirty-three R. And the large amount of. Oh, outdoor energy use. And how I. How they attain two points. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Sorry, just taking some notes here. Alrighty, so for the record, my name is Cliff Cross Planner Two. Before you, I do have the Wagner residence. This is a classy major single family. Currently, it is proposing to demo an existing single family and build a new single family. This property will have five bedrooms, six and a half bathrooms, an office or rec room, golf simulator, sauna, and a three car garage. I do want to. I guess preface a little bit. This is probably one of the first projects that you are seeing that encompasses the renewable energy mitigation program. So I don't know if you all are able to look at the calculation sheet that was included into the packet. But that's definitely just as an example, that aspect is actually a requirement of the building submittal. So sometimes it may not be included in the planning commission packet as such for the two at one warning star. But to dive in, as I specified, this would be removing a existing single family house that does have. I believe. Let me see, just shy of three thousand square feet with a larger driveway. Jumping into some of the concerns, we'll just go ahead and jump over to Alan's. Four seven R, and let me pull up. An overlay here. Staff basically thought about this policy quite a bit and how it relates from what is existing to what is proposed. There is a delta of about two thousand two hundred and forty-two square feet of paving. That is the difference between of the existing and proposed. I don't know why. This computer is not liking the size of these files. So as seen in your packet, I included this overlay, and this basically allows you to kind of see what is existing and what is proposed. So the green driveway here is what is existing, and then the red is what is proposed. As you can see, a lot of the location of the home and some of the immediate paving in the first portions of the driveway. Basically falls into a disturbed area already. Staff finds that this front end of the driveway, more or less. Is necessary for the actual meeting of engineering standards. So an eight percent driveway with these retaining walls as well as being able to bring the driveway into compliance. Because currently it shares a driveway with the property to the north. So one of the biggest aspects that staff contemplated was how we can bring the existing. Into compliance, both for safety, but also just meeting our standards. So staff was able to kind of recognize this first little bit of the driveway as kind of a necessary evil to basically meet those standards. Provide a safe driveway, but then also kind of mitigate some of the aspects of. The plow damaging the driveway as it is currently, so it has to come in a certain amount, and then it's kind of starts that eight percent up. That is also kind of a result of. While the length of the driveway of resultant of meeting that eight percent all the way from the beginning to where the parking pad is now. Staff more or less found that really from here back. Is all the additional paving. Like I said, the the property itself currently has just over three thousand square feet of paving. So this is only going to add two thousand two hundred and forty-two square feet of additional paving. And then based on the precedent in the packet. Those kind of aligned around negative two points. We can't really assign negative points for the existing disturbance. Then I don't know if it was such a concern from you, Alan, but the retaining walls is definitely a bigger aspect as well. Like, as I mentioned, the retaining structures in the front part of the property are required to kind of meet that eight percent slope. But then the retaining walls in the rear of the property are kind of resultant of the design of the architecture in the house. Especially placement, starting from this edge all the way back around. I believe that the maximum is just over six feet in some areas, mainly in this northeastern corner. For that, staff is recommending negative two points for the retaining walls. So between the two different items, it would bring a total of four negative points for the. Addition of disturbance and paving.
So this in terms of procedure, do you want to address the other questions that we ask you questions, or should we just?
I can just.
Questions about this issue. Should we ask the questions per issue? Does it matter?
This is. Either way is fine. So usually discussion, Alan.
I know you gave precedence, but. I forget the project in the Highlands that we did. This is very similar. Situation on the lot that. The applicant has chosen to orient to have the, in order to have the garage on the main level. They need to have a bigger driveway, and there's a lot of impact, and I guess. I I know the precedence you gave didn't include that, but I I thought we gave more negative points because of the impact of that project than Highlands. So that just thinking that maybe more negative points because of the length of so much retaining wall. And the extensiveness, I mean, it's they've made a choice that they want to have the garage hidden in the back. Where they could have a lot less impact, both visual and to the ground. If the garage was on the first level, you know, if you can go right into the garage.
Yes, sir. I believe that the project that you're talking about is thirty-two rounds road. And I do have the site plan here if we would like to look at it to compare the.
So you knew I was gonna ask this.
Try to come prepared. And as I, as I pull that up.
While you pull that up, is there a way for these for you to send us unlayered PDFs? Because I spent a lot more time analyzing. It took so long for each of these drawings to open up. Because I think it's saved it as individual items. Is there, is there a way that when what you share to us on the announcement? Could be a smaller P, so they would open up more quickly?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I mean, I know Jesse, when we have really big files, she does try to minimize them, but I'm not sure. I mean, I I've been dealing with a lot of big files with the BGV project recently. And it it seems like, I don't know if it's just our software, but there's a limitation in terms of like how small it. It will shrink it, and it still seems to be layered, so I'm not sure if there's something else, but I can ask her tomorrow if there's a way to make it, make it flat basically and not have the.
Okay, might be on the other end too, because I was having a similar problem. Every time I bring these drawings up, which are towards the end of the packet.
Yeah.
The the site would crush.
Yeah.
So maybe.
The server.
The server.
So anyway, back to the Highlands.
The fan of the computer coming on.
Not a symbol.
I don't know if I can side by side these. I'll just, I'll leave the overlay page up here.
Close it, because it'll take a while to open again.
So as you can see, the proposal is on the left, the the in red, the driveway length is three hundred and thirty feet long. The paving area is just over fifty-five hundred square feet. So the thirty-two rounds road is on the right side of the screen. This is a three hundred and thirty foot driveway length, so very similar in length. But it has just about sixty-three hundred square feet of of paving area, which is about seven hundred square feet more. And this project did receive negative four points. Nothing under the retaining walls. It was entirely for. The additional disturbance under the general standards of seven R.
Yeah, and once again, this. The the rounds road project. That was all new.
Yeah.
So we, there is no offset for existing pavement.
Yeah. So what is the, so is there a lot of, so. Even though it's existing. It's in order, it it's becoming more visual to bring it up to engineering code by putting in the retaining walls. I guess what concerns me is that on, you know, the upper. Like on page forty-six, where you see the. Upper left corner picture. And again, I I don't know, you know, there is a lot of vegetation there, but I just don't know how visual this is going to be. Coming up from Wellington Road.
Oh, you're talking about this picture up here.
Yeah, I mean, there's, that's a huge visual impact if that's what you're gonna, right now, that property is very. Hidden. But this could, this is very visual. I mean, this was. One of the reasons that the upper blue commission declined the Lizzie Load project because of this type of visual impact.
You have a drawing in the packet that shows how many trees need to come down to do the driveway where it is?
Yes, sir. So it is shown here on the site plan. But I believe I quantified it. Oh, geez. I think we just need a new computer down here. So for thirty-two rounds road, if I can remind you, that property did have a lot of trees that were previously approved under the defensible space work that was done. So the tree count may be inaccurate, but what staff has counted was fifty for thirty-two rounds road. And then for the Wagner residence, we have twenty-six trees that will be removed. Mainly in this front portion of the driveway. As specified and shown in the overlay, a lot of the disturbance of where the house is, is where the current house sits.
Yeah, that's, those are my questions.
Cliff, it's really hard to tell, but it looks, you know, I'm trying to count those circles that really aren't identified, but it looks like there's a dozen. Fairly significant trees that are in the path of the driveway. Is that?
Yes, sir.
Seeing that correctly.
You're correct.
So that will impact the visual.
Yeah.
Impact of that.
Yeah. Okay, that's all the questions I have on that.
Awesome. Thank you.
Let's see.
Mark, just to confirm, you had a question for the applicant specifically, didn't you?
I I I do.
Okay, then I'll jump over to Alan's question or Mike's questions.
So I could save us some time.
Yes, sir.
You know, I know two hundred thousand BTUs per hour of exterior gas appliances, gas fireplace and grill. A spa tub that's right up against the limit for. No impact at sixty-four square feet and all, and then the. No PV, the presumption that they will be able to get a lower, beat her score to gain two positive points, but. There's really nothing energy efficient in in this design. And yet, based upon the REMP calculation, they're only paying twenty-five hundred thirty-seven dollars. That's.
Yes, sir.
It's not an effective carrot or deterrent. Towards energy conservation.
So that is definitely just, so there's a lot of information with that. First, I'll kind of start out with basically saying. There are quite a bit of things that we, as the town, has identified as exempt. Basically to provide, you know, the minuscule amount or, yeah, heated paving for safety, et cetera. So for the hundred square feet of paving, he's not paying anything. The applicant is going to be able to get that at the apron of their driveway. When it comes to the spa, up to sixty-four square feet and eight by eight tub is allowed per code would be exempted. So the twenty-five hundred dollars that the applicant would have to pay under the REMP program is specifically for the BTU usage. Our chief building inspector has gone through a lot of public outreach in hand with High Country Conservation Corps. As well as Jesse Burley within our sustainability department. Through all of that outreach, they kind of identified as a two hundred thousand BTU per hour cap for property. Would basically allow the property owner a menu item of things that they could still achieve with that. A good fireplace, an outdoor cooking grill, and maybe, you know, another heater or two. Within that two hundred percent BTU per hour cap, they only offset ten percent of that budget. If they were to go over that two hundred or two hundred BTU, they are then one hundred percent responsible for offsetting all of it. So it is a little bit unique that this property is coming right at our exempted amounts. Got it. That's kind of up to more of the building inspectors to kind of check to make sure they're putting in the correct BTU pipes and restrictor lines. But then there are some other aspects that our development code still looks at, so we're still giving negative points at a thousand square feet. Of snow melt for this project. They're only doing one hundred. And then we've also capped our fireplace limit to three. Gas fired entirely for the property. So if you. Three individual fireplaces. Yeah, so previously, we did not have a cap on the amount of gas fireplaces, as we know from thirty-two rounds road. It basically. Probably nudge staff to go ahead and put in that limitation, so it would be three total. There is still the aspect, we allow one wood burning phase two EPA. Certified wood fireplaces. This property would be using both. EPA wood burning and all three gas fireplaces. They have two inside and then one gas fire pit outside. As well as the barbecue grill that is outside. So that kind of encompasses their. Energy usage, gas lines, and then outside those few take up the full two hundred budget.
Okay, that's a helpful explanation, and I certainly understand. Just two more things. Outdoor heaters are currently exempt? Electric heaters?
Yes.
Okay, is there a plan to? Require some offset on outdoor electric heaters? Seems like a loophole.
Yeah. We addressed gas to start with.
Okay.
Possibly down the road.
Okay.
Point.
I think that would be great. And then just repeat my previous comment that. Though this is a great start to encouraging energy conservation, I think that. You know, you you can heat a three thousand square foot house on two thousand, two hundred, two hundred thousand BTU. Think we're still generous in terms of. allowable energy consumption and that the twenty-five hundred thirty-seven dollar payment in lieu is very modest. But certainly, your presentation is sound and you're, and I concur with all the facts. So thank you.
And just another piece of information for you, just from the comments made earlier. Staff has already noticed a lot of change in decisions. We more or less, when we tell people that, you know, one hundred square feet of snow melt is about six to seven thousand dollars, depending on efficiency. They tell us, yeah, well, just, we just won't do it. And so we are seeing a change in behavior just based on having to pay into this program. Obviously, there's still the option of offsetting with solar and other alternative energies. But just as of right now, we haven't in kind of gotten that far into the program with some of the applicants, but. I know that the discussions between even Mark here this evening and the property owner. Kind of guided some of the decisions based on the amount of money that they would have to pay or offset.
Sure. Okay, that's helpful, and thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks, Alan.
Is there any other questions?
So. Eve, would you want to, there's a question for, I don't know if you want to address our two questions, but you have a question for one of the commissioners. I'm sorry, I was confused the project. Sorry, Mark.
I think the mic, is the mic on? There it is. Mark with Proveno Architecture. Thank you for your your time this evening reviewing the Wagner residence. We're excited to. To move forward with this project. And as as Cliff has has outlined, and he did a wonderful job in his staff report, and I appreciate all of staff's. Efforts in in that. We we have cited the house to conceal the garage. It's, I I just think that's a good design. Nobody wants to look at garage doors from the road. There are, there are some impacts with that, you know, of course, it makes the driveway longer, but as it was outlined earlier. Just to get up to where the existing driveway is, we have to do a whole bunch of retaining and and we're trying to make that a very beautiful wall. Keep the tiers small. Integrate terraces and landscaping in 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 between the natural boulders. What doesn't show up on any plans, and it doesn't show up in my rendering, because I was trying to show the house, there's a whole. Swath of aspen trees along in the right of way, right, right at the curb line. On this property, which we're will continue to, they're, they won't be disturbed. They'll continue to provide some buffering. And, you know, conceal the house to some degree from from the road. I guess. Yeah, the the aspens, and then, yeah, again, the. If if we didn't have to comply with a fairly tight engineering requirement, we could get, you know, get up quicker. And and get to the to the house more quickly, but that's not the case, and the twenty-six trees or however many were counted that are under the asphalt now. Again, I I don't know where I'd put the driveway to comply with engineering's requirements if if I didn't. um exercise a a, you know, or or design something such as this, so um I I think uh we're we're trying to to be as soft as we can um on the site and and make it as beautiful as we can. And uh uh I I guess the other the other um there's a question about uh energy compliance and the thirty-three R um uh exercise, and we're con- consulting with Deeper Green. Um we're consulting with um Active Energies on solar uh voltaics for the roof, and we're going to work with both of those entities to uh create a thermal envelope and a whole package that is at least twenty percent better than code minimum, and that's that's the goal. And uh and that's how we're we're planning on achieving it.
Thank you, Mark.
Sure. Um Mr. Lees, I I think you had a specific question for me.
Yes, Mark. You've got um you've got about forty feet of grade um on this property. And my concern is is for sediment control. You've got wattle indicated there, and that's grossly insufficient for sediment control. I'd like to see you revise that so that the contractor would put super sediment fence up all along that area, which is going to get the erosion. You've got a seven thousand square foot house, you've got four thousand fifty-seven feet of excavation that you're doing, plus the overdig. You're going to have a lot of dirt coming out of there. You're going to have the potential of a lot of dirt going down Wellington Road and down into the Blue River.
Okay, we'll address that, thank you.
That's all I had.
Can I just want to make one other point? Um when we were uh comparing this project with um thirty-two rounds, I think it's more like uh Cliff, I think it's more twelve hundred square feet of additional asphalt at thirty-two rounds than what we're proposing, based on the numbers that that I saw in staff report. Um so that that was a project that was, when I first met with Cliff and showed him some schematic design efforts, this project was was pointed to and said, you know, this project got negative four points, and so we're we were kind of expecting that, we're we're prepared for that, and we're prepared to offset that. Um and and we feel that that you know, t- trying to assign more points to our project, I think, would be not not only not a precedent, but would be completely unfair based on uh, you know, the precedent that's up there. So we'll leave that at that.
Yeah, that made this one where it might be going back to staff, but you but the reason that the uh the driveway uh doesn't go straight into Wellington Road is that you want to preserve the curb cut or easement from Wellington? It's already there.
There is, so currently, the property to the north, they share a driveway. Um so this would be moving their driveway away from that sharing um and having two individual curb cuts for both properties. Um so that would basically um per engineering's request.
So they they share a driveway and they share the curb cut for the driveway?
Yes, I can.
For the sake of not having a s- and this home having their own curb cut, they have to build that whole uh extra stretch of driveway.
It it's really not feasible to to bring the curb cut south, the the grade is much, much steeper.
Yeah, okay.
And.
He never make.
You couldn't get in the road, you couldn't get on there.
Never make the grade.
Got it, okay, thanks.
Thank you again.
Here, I can show everyone just so we have a a good idea here. So this is the shared driveway entry here. The property um that we're reviewing is here on the right, so this would be the driveway going up currently. Um and then the alternative um to the north. Um so currently, would basically be separating these two um and being able to kind of enter a little bit further south on Wellington and then bring this to a eight percent compliance.
Yeah. Could you um, that's an amazing image, could you pan south just a little bit? I just wanted to illustrate, there's the Aspen Forest that's in front of the retaining walls. So it's it's quite obscured. Thank you.
Mark, I have a question, it's just kind of off, so I parking during construction is going to be a nightmare.
Yeah.
Have you guys thought about off-site and what you're going to do there? I I drive that road a lot.
Yeah, and and um I I that hasn't been strategized yet. Um you know, there is obviously the driveway that can be parked in, but I know practically, yeah, it doesn't work so well. So um that's certainly going to be something that the builder needs to um to address and and uh you know, there'll be some some kind of a a a program for that, I don't know, I don't have an answer for that.
I was just curious, because I, when that property went up for sale and I knew what was going to happen, that was my first thought, oh boy.
Yeah.
We're gonna have a mess there. Okay.
Okay, um since we're at a full hearing here, um so consent calendar ourselves to open up for the public, correct?
Yep.
So as this is now a public hearing, are there any members of the public who wish to comment? Please raise your hand with the icon at the bottom of your screen or press star nine if you're attending by phone, star six to unmute. No one online? Mark, you're the only one in the audience, so I don't think you have a comment. Uh that closes the public hearing. So uh commissioner comments? Uh there's no questions to answer, Susan, did you have any comments?
No comments.
Okay. We're at least asked.
Mike, yes.
Um I have no comments other than the previous comments.
Okay.
Uh and because the minutes don't entirely uh incorporate play-by-play, um I would add that the um energy conservation fee uh is a great start. Its focus is on gas service. Uh this project's done a good job, frankly, on behalf of the client, maximizing the size of everything while staying just under the caps. Um I encourage the town to continue this and to add the electric resistance space heat, exterior space heaters to it. And I do feel the twenty-five hundred thirty-seven dollars is not a real carrot or deterrent um for a home of this price point. Thank you.
Mark, any comments?
Uh no.
Ethan?
No comments.
Um my only comment and made this is uh the question back to staff, so seven R D actually says minimum point should not should be minus four plus four, not minus two plus two. And I'd just like to to the applicant, I'm it it this is not to penalize, we're just, we have to be very careful about precedent here. And I know it's nice to hide the garage, but there are options to have a discreet garage, and there's part of this is, I know it's more convenient and prefer- preferential for homeowners to have the garage on the same level. Uh but there are, there are trade-offs here, and again, my concern is just having a very visible uh driveway uh coming up Wellington Road, I don't know how much those aspens are going to hide it.
Please.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm sharing my comment, so it's 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 uh sure.
Sure. And I guess really quick too on the multiplier, it's a two multiplier and then minus four plus four. So within that um with that two multiplier, you could go anywhere from, you know, negative two or positive two up to uh negative eight or positive eight. You 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 can use like a one-point increment in the negative four.
Oh, so you can go up to four minus, I thought that was the minimum, okay.
You could have two, four, six, or eight, those are your choices.
Confusing, like um.
Got it.
This is actually one, I'm gonna steal Mark's thunder here, but um Mark was actually on the committee when um that helped with the comprehensive code amendments about four years ago. We used to only have minus four or minus eight.
Yeah.
And we purposely put in those two increments to kind of, you know, not penalize some um as much and others that um needed some negative points, but not negative four, that they could get that, so.
Okay.
Flip over to the site plan where it shows the grading, please. So the existing um the existing garage is roughly at uh ninety-six forty um point something. And if you look at the contours on the proposed contours on the driveway, I hit ninety-six forty um right off the corner, right right when the walls roughly end. So to get up, I mean, if we were going to just replace what was there and get up to the same elevation, the walls that are visible from Wellington are required.
Yeah.
So so all the stuff behind that point is is really what we're what we're debating. Um I, you know, again, I I it it's a necessary evil, I didn't make the code. You know, so um I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I'm
Our ju- we're judges, so it's our job to follow the code.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um and I'm just trying to help you understand that that that's a necessary element to make the to make the hit the the letter of the code.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Okay.
And Mark, is it your point that the uh from that point on where the ninety-six forty is and the first retaining wall ends up is only going to be visible by the homeowner on this other piece of property adjacent?
Yeah, it's so far up, you're you're
So you're not, what you're saying is you're not going to see it from the street?
That's correct, and you're, there's no vantage point unless you're, you know, behind the house in the in the utility easement or or the neighbor, which we were putting uh quite a heavy planting scheme, you know, between those lots, so.
I just wanted to clarify your point.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, uh with that, I'll entertain a motion. We don't have uh the uh the judge here. I can't.
Trying to find.
I can't, I can't make the motion.
You can make them, you may may not make them as well.
Mister Chairman, I recommend the planning commission approve PL two zero two three dash zero four eight seven. The Wagner Residence uh with a passing score of, I think it's zero.
Plus one.
Plus one.
Thank you. Points um. Did you want to add?
Yeah, I'd I'd like to have a stipulation um from the um the owners and the architect that they are going to do the increased sediment control with super sediment control fence.
So is that something we can ask um Town Building to do, or is that something that needs to be uh an additional condition?
Um if you want, you could add it to, there's already condition on um stormwater detention, that type of thing in here. So if you wanted to, you might want to add it there, I mean, that's the best way to make sure that it's um, you know, memorialized.
I'll withdraw my motion, and I will make a motion on behalf of Mark. Thank you. Um unless you want to do it.
No, good.
I was trying to keep things.
Edition number thirteen, Mike and Mark, um applicant shall submit and obtain approval from town engineer of final drainage, grading, utility, and erosion control plans. You may want to just add something there, including the use of you call it.
Super sediment.
Add to a second sentence to um condition thirteen. As per discussion at Planning Commission Review, add super set sediment fence.
Control fence.
Super sediment control fence. Thank you.
Is that a, is that a a real term that's used to define those?
Google it. Basically, what you do is you dig, you dig a trench six feet down, and along that trench is you erect a chain link, forty-two inch chain link fence with metal post, metal chain link, and then that chain link is covered with super sediment with with regular filter fabric that goes down into the trench, gets backfilled, and then it's folded over the top of that, so it catches whatever comes down.
Six inches, not six feet. That makes more sense. You said six feet deep, you're not digging.
No, six inches.
I just corrected.
Six inches. You had us worried, yeah, not six feet, not six feet, we're not burying anybody.
Were you able to record that motion?
That do we have a second? Motion is okay, he just described.
I just, yeah, I just.
Do we have a second for the motion? I just want to make sure they got it recorded.
I'll second.
Uh Mister Fractor?
Yes.
Mister Giller?
Yes.
Miss Proper?
Yes.
Mister Garrett?
Yes.
Mister Lees?
Yes.
And then Miss Gore and Mister Gerard are absent.
So, project passes?
No, that's the motion.
That's the mo- oh, the motion, okay.
Now you're looking for
Oh, the mo- okay, now the motion.
The project.
Okay.
All right, um Mister Chair.
So corrected.
Uh where's Steve when you need him?
Yeah.
I recommend the planning commission approve the Wagner Residence, uh project PL two thousand twenty-three dash zero four eight su- seven, along with the find, the attached finding findings and conditions, including the modified finding thirteen regarding sediment control with a passing score of one point.
All right. Second.
Mister Lees, I mean, excuse me, Mister Fractor?
Yes.
Mister Geller?
Yes.
Mister Proper?
Yes.
Mister Garrett?
Yes.
Mister Lees?
Yes.
And then uh Miss Gore and Mister Gerard are absent. Motion passes five zero.
Thanks, Mark.
Bye. Okay, uh work session. Cliff? Man of the hour. Yeah. That means you have ten minutes. I think we'll be able to tackle this in minutes.
So, I don't know if I actually show anything. For the record, Cliff Cross, Planner Two. Um before you this evening, we have the work session for defensible space. Um this would be our third work session discussing this. Um previously, we discussed um in June and in August. Um but we are back today kind of reconfirming some of our discussion previously. Before you today are the code amendments specifically for policy twenty-two A and policy forty-eight A. Um both of them, which deal with the defensible space regulations. Um but I would like to be clear that both of these do different things. Um so for policy twenty-two A, um that is the required defensible space um that is triggered when a project is new construction or is a major remodel. Um staff defines major remodel as touching more than ten percent realistically, well, addition of ten percent or more um would have to be a major remodel. Um forty-eight A is a policy that allows um property owners to voluntarily create defensible space on their property. Um this is not triggered by uh, you know, a certain um application or something. Property owners are coming to us seeking this guidance to implement um and protect life and property. Um so with that clarification, before you, we have the code amendments that we discussed two sessions ago, I believe. Um really of how we can align our current regulations to the regulations of our community members. Um so red, white, and blue, Summit County, Frisco, um et cetera, some of our other municipalities have adopted a more up-to-date firewise standard, um which basically does create a a new zone one that we don't officially recognize. So with these changes, we'd create a new zone one, which is a zero to five feet. Two, it would kind of reorganize the existing zones as well as relabel them to align with firewise standards. And then third is create that downtown core map that we've previously discussed, which helps staff kind of identify areas that have the ability to interpret or um implement the entire firewise standards and then other properties that have developed a little bit more tightly, densely um where staff would take kind of a um case-by-case basis and being able to um review the property for maintaining buffering while also implementing some defensible space. That is a, a quick overview. We'll take any questions from commissioners.
Okay, any to work session, so?
I have no questions.
I think it's pretty much reflects what we already discussed, so really judge generate any new questions.
Mike, any?
No, I. Big body of work. Uh, we've been, there's been a lot of positive progress on this, so I'm happy to see it. I'm also dealing with this in Evergreen, so it's kind of.
Yes.
Only thoughts is just uh, about enforcing, because since we've had this discussion, I, I just, you know, anyone who has firewood has it piled up against the house.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, when, and when you use firewood, it's, it's, you don't want to have to shovel a path fifteen or feet away to get to your firewood. I just, uh, you know, I'm just curious how aggressively the fire department or, you know, red, white and blue or, or the town is going to be enforcing that.
Yeah, um, in my discussions, definitely with um, you know, Matt Benedict, the captain of Fire Wi- or Wildfire Division. There's definitely a lot of things that they're really wanting you to implement. The location of your firewood isn't, you know, a make or break of, are they going to protect your home? Um, if there is something coming in and you know, you've been able to implement some kind of fire break, you don't have overgrown weeds or anything, they're going to be able to kind of like protect your home. So that's kind of the biggest items that they're looking for. If they see that your firewood's under your porch, they're not going to say, oh, Alan's out this week, we're not protecting his. Um, they're still going to kind of do as much as possible. So it is kind of finding that right balance for your particular property. Um, but I do think the standards specify that firewood should not be adjacent.
I'm not talking about my house, I'm just that, that's.
Yeah, and.
I think people don't realize how dangerous this is, because not only is that a problem from a brush fire that comes up from your neighbor's yard or whatever, but I can tell you a story about a very close relative of ours who had an eight thousand square foot house burned down for the second time. And what happened, when they were in Florida, they, one of their kids came over and on a Sunday and had a few people over, they build a fire in the fireplace. The fire went out, they made sure that was out, they made sure the screen was in front of it. However, there was a lot, lot of wind that day. And they had firewood piled on the outside of the house. The wind blew down the chimney and created a positive pressure situation, which blew ash out to where the firewood pile was. It ignited the firewood, burned up the masonry exterior of the house without igniting anything, but it got to the eve. And it ignited the eve and the fire just came right across the top of the house, ignited the roof and the whole roof dropped into the house and it was total loss. So, you know, just a freak thing, it just doesn't make any sense to pile your firewood there when you're too lazy to shovel the snow.
Yeah.
And that's my answer to that.
Yeah.
It was just, it's not a smart thing to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think.
I don't burn firewood, so you're good.
Yeah. I think like to clarify too is, you know, a lot of it, particularly with the voluntary defensible space aspect, it's really an educational opportunity and we're encouraging homeowners to take advantage of that policy, um where, you know, I, I think when red, white and blue comes out and does an assessment, say, these are the trees, these are the things you need to do as well as relocate your firewood. Those are all things that are basically encouraged under policy forty-eight, where we have um a new, you know, a new development like tonight where they're required to do defensible space or like the two homes. And um, if we went to a CO and we saw that there was firewood piled there, we would say that's in violation of policy twenty-two. Um, but I guess going uh, going forward where the, the policies are, it, it, it would have to probably be like an additional layer of like nuisance of things that related where they would almost have to have like a third kind of arm to this um policy, but I think right now with red, white and blue really trying to be aggressive in terms of educating and working with homeowners and then us trying to get, you know, in, in, in line as much as we can while still achieving other goals within the town in terms of beautification. Um, it, it's really educating people for the dangers and using examples like what Mark just provided us that, you know, here's your, really your worst case scenario if you have this situation on your property.
All right. I think we're good. Counsel or anything? Do we need, or do we need to do a roll call vote that we?
You just do an affirmative of just like, yeah, head nod, everyone supports this going.
Everyone support this? Good work. Thank you all. Are we okay?
Just a sec.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, town council update.
All right, um, so the council's actually had two meetings since uh, uh, we last met. Um, their first meeting, uh, well, the second meeting last week was budget meeting. So it's really pretty non-eventful in terms of any planning issues or anything. It was really just about, um, they spent the whole afternoon discussing the twenty-twenty-four budget, and so that's moving forward relatively smoothly and uh, there's, oh, tons of things included in there. One of the interesting ones probably um might want to be aware of is um, there's going to be, um, the McKean Road is going to be completed next year to the tune of like nine million dollars. And that will connect from Alta Verde, Alta Verde Two, all the way down to Coin Valley Road. Um, so it'll provide that secondary access. Um, it's going to be helpful. It was kind, it's, it's part of our agreement with the school district when we uh, you know, the school district acquired that property. Um, and um, anyway, um, there's a, so anyway, that's a um, that's going to proceed and it's going to provide an alternate route too for people that are living there. Because there is a concern about with a hundred and seventy-two more units on top of the eighty at AV one right now, what that's going to do to the Fairview Roundabout. And so the thought is that some of the folks will be using that to go south to Coin instead of, you know, not all of them, a lot of them still probably go up to the Roundabout, but it, it provides a secondary um egress out of that whole area.
Is that going to line up with Dennison Road? Is that where it's going to?
Um, no, 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 it's going to be further, further east.
Okay.
Of the river.
So does that mean they're going to pave all that section that's dirt now?
Yes. Yeah.
And will the improvement attempt to, it, there's a lot of switchbacks and, and very steep turns that would be difficult for, for example, a fire truck to negotiate. Are they going to bring those up to engineering?
On the McKean property.
Excuse me?
On the McKean property, it's pretty flat.
I'll show you. Okay, I misunderstood what you were saying.
Yeah, no, the McKean property, you know, the um, in the valley there, south of the, basically next to where the solar panels are and moving south.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I'm sorry, I thought you mentioned Ski Hole Road.
Oh, no.
Okay. So you're talking about, okay.
Chris, the far end.
All right. I misunderstood, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I got this area here. We have like CMC would be approximately here in this area out just uh south of the BBC.
Yep. Got it.
Anyway, um.
I think that's great. That road's going to be good.
Yeah, it's going to be helpful, but not a.
A lot of people will use it. I think I'll use it.
Yeah, yeah. Um, but not a, not a small ticket item for sure. Um. Then I, uh, the main thing was uh, uh, really um back on the sixth, the special meeting, um BGV discussion. Um, I think I saw you there, Mark, and um.
I was there as well.
But uh, you, yeah, that's right, you were too eaten. Um, thanks for your interest. I mean, it's a pretty interesting pride, pride, project. Chris uh, Chris did a great job analyzing it. It was really parcel four that we focused on, which is the old East Peak Eight Hotel, which site that was approved. It's the existing admin building site that's going to be scraped. Um, and so all the input was on that, so I'll probably just start the discussion about it and then maybe let Chris talk a little bit more about it too. Um, one of the pieces they've seeked a waiver from, so it's, it's one big package, right? These six different parcels, we've talked about it, and is from the rent program. They're concerned about meeting the letter of rent. And so what BGV has proposed is can we use other buildings that we own like in town to put solar on and offset the outdoor energy use there? And um, the council's pretty comfortable with that, going that route. Here's an interesting thing about ramp and um, you kind of alluded it to it earlier today, today Cliff was mentioning it. Everyone is designing or um with ramp in mind now. Um, the previous um East Peak Eight Hotel had fifty-one thousand square feet of outdoor heated space. They came in um, and with a lower number than that, BGV did, and they continued to work at it and brought it down to where now it's at six thousand square feet. And that's for their pool area and their little outdoor area next to the restaurant right slope side there. So um, you know, and they, they said, you know, we're just going to shovel some of these emergency grass sidewalks and stuff like that. And um, anyway, um, so it's working, ramp is working from that perspective, and that we're seeing that, those kind of reductions and to start with. Um, so the council's pretty happy about it um, in, in terms of they're, they're comfortable letting them use other buildings to put solar on um, to, to make that offset, because there's some issues with the um, you know, the roof lines, et cetera, on this building in terms of maximizing solar. Um, and um, they've also made a commitment to offset all their indoor energy use as well. So they're kind of upping the game and that was part of their strategy for, you know, getting the council to say, yes, we're okay with that. So that's going to be the strategy. If there's any, for any reason that they can't um, a hundred percent offset their outdoor use with their existing buildings, um, then they would pay into the in, in lieu fee program for ramp for anything that remains. So there was discussions at one point about going out of the county, buying into some solar gardens down in the Front Range. Um, council wasn't excited about that and um BGV is taking that off the table. So anyway, um, that's a brief old um, brief, it, it, the other thing I'd mention is that they were at massive amount of negative points under thirty-three R for all the outdoor heated space. Because they brought it down to six thousand square feet, um, now they're just getting a handful of negative points which they can overcome like with EV chargers. So um, I think it's working pretty well. Um, Chris, maybe you want to go over the other aspects of parcel four, if you don't mind?
Yeah, so like um, we kind of had it broken into four main areas. Um, one being just the overall size and site programming, two being traffic impacts related to the development of um, really both parcel four as well as the single-family home sites up at parcels five and six. And then also uh, impacts to cucumber gulch. So cucumber gulch, we basically presented that we anticipated that they'd have to be water quality detention, um expansions to the area that's out of the wetlands now, that's adjacent, you can see from Ski Hill Road that was originally contemplated at the last um approved design, and there is a variance procedure for it, so we didn't think there needed to be any special considerations for that. And that would be more appropriate to be handled at site specific. Um, in terms of, in terms of traffic impacts, um, the overall number of parking spaces is reduced by, I think it's fifty-nine spaces compared to what was previously um approved, but then there would be the additional spaces for the single-family home sites, um, which, which we're guessing would be kind of a wash in terms of total number of vehicles at the, at the peak times for all those properties. Um, so, so basically, there, there was a general discussion about, about traffic, but I think that um, in general, the council probably acknowledged that the impacts are to be worse than they are today, but probably no worse than what was previously um approved. Finally, looking at the, the overall building programming and, and site plan, um, it's really pretty of similar to what was approved previously at the East Peak Eight Hotel. The building is nominally smaller um by three point one percent. Uh, they have reduced some of the, the width of the building where there's greater separation between the building and one skill place as well as to the east um in the, the four o'clock subdivision. Um, one thing we did want the council to weigh in a little bit more is, is previously, uh, the building stepped down a little bit more towards the four o'clock subdivision where um, there was kind of a wing that started at two stories and then stepped up to full height. As part of like shrinking the footprint, they eliminated that step-down feature. So we acknowledge that there's a greater setback, but we also acknowledge that from a visual standpoint, it's a harsher um, kind of wall plane, if you will, there. So we, we have requested that they provide some additional renderings so that we could discuss that further with the council if that's what they want. They want the greater setback or they'd rather prefer the step-down is, which is what's um required actually in the current master plan is to have buildings stepped down at the edges um, towards that, that neighborhood. Uh, the, the service, um, there's two curb cuts um proposed. There's this, the same one that was proposed for all the guests arriving and going to the underground parking. And then there's a new service entrance that is um within the actual property. Before the service entrance actually went through one skill place and kind of wrapped around and then the loading bay was very tight um to the property line with one skill place. That's been relocated eighty feet further inward to their property, the um, just to create uh more buffer between there and the one skill place property. And from what we understand that uh, one skill place is very supportive of that, that redesign um component. But those are, you know, the, the general highlights, I guess, that we went over. Obviously, there's a lot more in a three-hour meeting, but.
Um, that's a good summary. Is there still a space or is still part of the program for B O E C to be in in the building?
There are, yeah. I um, I think it's approximately a hundred square feet, actually greater, and that's, that's one other area that they did request. Um, snowmelt in terms of having uh kind of the deck where the B O C uh is, equipment is loaded just for ease for those um, those participants in that area. It's a small, I think it's only like a hundred and fifty square feet of heated space, but they thought that was worth it considering the clientele that they're dealing with getting on snow. But they, they did look at other things where instead of even removing snow, that they'll have um people out grooming paths um in snow to kind of get onto the property versus having a heated walkway or other items. They, they thought that was probably easier than and would provide better footing than shoveling and uh obviously is a lot more energy efficient than um doing snowmelt.
Are they including a, a, a locker room for the ski school there? Because they're tearing that down too.
There is um, there, there's a certain amount of support space and um guest service space that the ski area I think is under, like, is part of the sale they're required to provide.
Yeah.
That level of detail of what the programming is, is, is not provided. I, I, you know, I think there's obviously um somewhere up there, they have to accommodate patrol locker rooms and um, and I think that there's uh seventy-five parking spots that they're um, they want to provide for ski area, like essential ski area employees, which I think a good portion would go to patrol that are getting there early in the morning and, and have identified as pretty vital to get their first thing and kind of be unimpeded, um, so they can start uh control work. Um, but the level of detail of what everything else is, is not there, but there'll be so, um, some level of locker rooms, I think, within that building. Or if not, be shifted to another one and, and then this building will accommodate um, the space that they reallocated. the space that they reallocated.
So Chris, it sounded to me as though the general, um, tone of BGV was with this request was that they're coming on the back of the previously approved project, which approval has expired. Sound as though the tone of the town council was to basically give them this process as an, almost an entitlement with specificity to be further defined and put in place. Is, is that accurate?
I mean, I think it's somewhat accurate. I think they're, you know, they're, with all the parcels in play and kind of the, you know, the, the give and take. Um, I think BGV is, is providing a, really a lot greater level of detail of what they're anticipating constructing than you typically would get at the development agreement. And I think that's the kind of win, you know, favor of the town that, so they fully under, of the council that fully understands what they're getting into, but also that it protects the developer in the sense that they can go back and within the development agreement, see, we, we specifically said, this is what we want to do. Because the build out of all the parcels, it's to take, you know, a number of years. And, and to that point, they actually specifically requested for five years extended vesting for the amended gondola lots master plan, cause that will need to be amended to reflect what they're proposing to the development agreement. As well as additional seven years extended vesting for the peak, um, eight portion of the master plan with, with, um, parcel four probably being the last component to be constructed after they have to do the obligations for employee housing, roundabout, um, parking structure, subdivide the, the single family lots and build the duplexes. So they want that, you know, this, the standard three-year extension is not enough to get through all their, their components of what they're, they're talking about or safeguard anyway, in case something, um, you know, changes in the financial markets and such.
And I think that the council is generally supportive of seeing the development there as opposed to on that north gondola lot. That's gonna stay undeveloped, you know, just for parking in that. And, um, yes, there was always gonna be some building that could still happen up at, um, up at the. Yeah, um, it's just that it would have been smaller based on our changes to our zoning, so.
So a lot of the, the discussion was about traffic and, um, has there been any discussion about partnering with the ski area to extend the hours of the gondola? Because that has potential to impact.
You know.
Did I say parking? I'm in traffic.
Yeah, that, you know, it, it's a conflict for us be, for staff, honestly, because, um, the whole gondola operating hours are based on protecting the wildlife up there in the gulch. And so to extend those hours is kind of directly in conflict with, um, all our wildlife biologist recommendations. They say, you know, like, um, early morning, evening are the most active times for the wildlife up there.
That makes sense.
You know, and stuff like that. So that's where it gets, I agree. That's like a nat, it seems like a natural, man, we could, you know, we'd keep cars off the road, but that's kind of the, where we, the rub is, is, is trying to balance those two. All right. Well, thank you.
Well, I think like, assuming, you know, it, it seems like they're making good progress. There's a lot of like, like details that we're still, still going through. Um, I think there, there's a realistic chance they could get to an agreement um, in January, you know, this is the kind of looking at where the meetings line up. And then from there, um, there's kind of the, the month period where you have to wait for it to become effective through ordinance. And, and then they'll probably start working on master plan amendments, um, I guess being the gondola lots being the, the one that they'll modify first, but they may decide to do both of them concurrent, you know, concurrently, obviously two different applications. So I think it, it wouldn't be unrealistic to see some master plan modifications that to get in line with the development agreement beginning late next spring or early summer. And then, um, you know, considering the level of specificity within the development agreement, you know, it's probably realistic that they might get through those within six months and then start working on, um, some site specific components with the first being, uh, the parking garage, workforce housing and the roundabout and possibly the duplexes on the South Gold Rush being lumped in. So that, you know, maybe could hit in about a, probably a little over a year, I'm guessing.
Chris, I'm confused. Why would they do the gondola lot first if that's not where they're going to do any construction?
Well, the, the gondola lots master plan area encompasses North Gondola, South Gold Rush and North Gold Rush.
So you, you're speaking of that in total.
Yeah, that, that in total.
Specifically that parcel.
No, not that parcel. Really, the only thing that we anticipate that would, um, be constructed on the North Gondola would be water quality improvements and detention that it currently doesn't have and maybe some, um, limited landscaping and lighting improvements. But yeah, like the, you know, the, the hook for the developers really to put those big infrastructure improvements that are guaranteed upfront, so the, not unlike what we had previously seen with, uh, the other, the current gondola lots master plan that you reviewed.
Whole project also hinges on all of the parcels being approved, the whole package, including the Timber Trail.
Mm-hmm.
And there's, we haven't gone through that yet and there's, there may be hurdles there that just to point that out in your timeframe, that could get slowed down by that as well.
Yeah, well, I guess with the Timber Trail, we, we've talked about that uh, two meetings ago, and I think the council gave us direction. There, there is an access, a track at the end that allows access and they've given kind of, um, you know, a, a, a lot layout and they're actually revising, they have a revision to that and it's, it's fairly detailed. And, um, it, it didn't really seem like there was any, you know, substantial hiccups with that concept from the, the council.
Adjoining properties that might have some pretty serious objections.
Yeah. And the council is aware of that, that feedback, um, but we, we haven't heard that that has been, uh, an issue for the council du- thus far, but we, there have, have been letters written both be, um, by the HOA as well as individual members and, you know, a lot of the, the items that they've listed in those letters that both us and the, the town attorney have had to look into and, and, um, and, and then present that information to the, the council. But at this point, from the feedback that we've seen, the, the council seems to look favorable on the, the, the general nature of the, the single family home sites, um, adjacent to Trigby's and beyond Timber Trail.
Which you're right, Ethan, even after this development agreement, they will still have to go through the rezoning through the master plan process, amending the peak seven and eight master plan, and then there'll have to be a subdivision. Um, so those are all opportunities for the neighbors to show up. Now, I know Mike Dudik has been talking with those neighbors and working and, you know, it's really gonna be him feeling comfortable that he can move forward, knowing he's got those steps down the road. Um, you know, but council doesn't see any major issues, um, in what's been proposed so far.
I just brought it up as I know that there's a lot of hurdles yet on the timeline. If everything goes smooth, we may see it then.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, I think, I think what, I think what I stated would be like your, you know, your quickest scenario, obviously, any, and there's any number of places where it can get the, the developer may decide to like to slow it down or, um, when it's under their discretion in terms of timing of applications and, and such, once a development agreement is formed.
And I, I brought this up when, when we had the first, um, rendition of the, the plans. I think it's really important that the town, ask for performance bonds on the parking garage and the, um, the roundabout. Um, we saw, we, we can see what happened over in Dillon when there was no performance bond in place with that private proj- project over there. Uh, and the last thing we would want to happen, although everybody likes Mike, is for something like that to happen in downtown Breckenridge.
Yeah, and I, I think this is probably an important, just to reemphasize that, you know, if you look at the parcels individually, you know, someone might think like, well, this is a big, you know, this is a big increase compared to what there was previously, but they're really looking at all these parcels in total and what they think is the best deal for the community is how they're, how they're, um, looking at this development agreement. So there, there's, there's, I think they would all acknowledge there's trade-offs um, along the way, but I, I think that's probably something that can't be emphasized enough.
Anything else?
Thanks guys.
Did they do the call up yet or, I mean, the, the review for the old R M U lot next week? All right, any other questions, comments? I will be remote next meeting, so vice chair will be in charge. Okay, uh, at seven fifty-four, do, we'll call the.
Six fifty-four.
Six fifty-four. Oh, good, yes. Going to a bad time. Uh, we'll call the, uh, end of the, uh, October seventeenth Town of Breckenridge Planning Commission meeting.
Now, is that a large phone or a small tablet?
Small.
It's the iPad mini. I've never, I've never seen.
But they, they, some of the reviews.